I would like to testify that we are United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here, let's do it. Any public comment? Public here or the public on what? Do you have them on? Do you have approval of the ones? Did you have to do the ones?
I have. I have no additional corrections.
Does that motion to approve? I'll make a motion to approve this right now.
Thank you.
All the papers in the pocket say aye.
Aye.
Any official comments? Sure. Go ahead.
So, last week on Wednesday, I was part in a staff meeting with the new healthcare management group for Sumter Village Thursday. I met with constituents that had concerns on our decision to go into a management agreement with the new healthcare. So, did that yesterday with Scott Schwab, the Secretary of State, came to Elizabeth's and I attended that luncheon. I have been working with the Road and Bridge Department on contractor timeline concerns and then traffic count stats on how we can maybe have some metrics for future decision making. And then I just want to say thank you to the Axon County Health Department for being responsive in the Alcrad for weekly updates for the COVID statistics. And then also to be back on that that they have a board opening for medical professionals and we're taking letters of interest up until September 3rd. Also, I just wanted to say our condolences to the family of Gary Hosier. I have read that he has been a heavy equipment operator for our Road and Bridge Department for over 45 years for Axon County. So, that is all.
True. Okay. There was also another reporting of KDAT announces that Kansas COVID-19 County ranking report. It attracts COVID-19 metrics, including testing case and vaccine rates. And it brings together the most critical COVID-19 metrics at a local level. It ranks three metrics. One is the full series of vaccination rate of eligible, of the eligible population, sorry. Number two, a seven-day daily average number of COVID cases per 100,000 people. And three, a seven-day daily average number of COVID-19 tests administered per 100,000 people. And this will be refreshed three times a week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday on the KDAT's website. And I know that the county health department had shared that, or NEK had shared that information. So, that's just another new reporting. This one's coming from KDAT, so it might be something you're interested in looking at.
I just kind of noticed we were collecting this week. It's March 15, 2020. There's a special meeting of the Axon County Commission, Sunday night, 6 o'clock. Three commissioners there, this role, myself, and I just, well, actually, I attended the FaceTime because I was next to a state celebrating my wife's birthday. Never heard of Zoom. I heard FaceTime. So, I was kind of thinking about superintendents and all the people there at the meeting discussing primarily schools. And if you heard that expression like, dear, dear in the spotlight, everybody was like, what do we do? What is this? What does it mean? And it was an incredible situation. And we, everybody turned around. I get people at bus, but a curtain between the students. So, it was like everybody was just grasping or something to move forward. And that was 536 days ago. And we're still somewhat grappling with that situation with COVID and vaccines and live vaccines. And, you know, it was amazing to me that I heard the health nurse in Lehigh County, 18 years. Somebody shot their dog, tore down her mailbox, threatened her. Similar thing happened in Jackson County. We lost her there. That was 63 county health officials. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of water under the bridge. Some students were made good, some were not so good. I guess the history books will eventually write that. I'm going to tell you that right now, our public health officials are taking phone calls from superintendents, from school nurses, from hospitals. They are inundated with lots of decisions and lots of input. And the NEK is doing that at these weekends. In fact, understand, Lehigh County now wants to join NEK because they can't figure out how to find a public health nurse. But I just wanted to say that I would never, as a county commissioner, as best practices, ever call out the person that had an associate, that was an associate of the county, either on social media or a public meeting. I would always have those conversations privately. So, that's just why I think I would never, ever do that. So, think about that when you're calling people out. You have to walk to their shoes. So.
Thank you, Jack. I'd like another chance to rebook because I know that's against me because I did make a post on social media based on the performance of our local health nurse. And that is from constituent feedback, emails from superintendents, and many, many people in Axon County that are fed up. Since I've been here in January, she doesn't come before us. We've asked over and over again. We had a meeting on, I believe it was May 11th, but I have to double check the date, where Christina Bromine came in front of us. And we have, it's documented. You guys can go back and refresh your memory of what we asked from her that we did not get. We left here last Tuesday with you saying, hey, let's go out and find out what the public wants to see. Well, my social media platform is what I did. I did that. Christina came on and took over and said, email me, tell me. Like, they don't allow us to do our job as commissioners. And our job is to listen to the public and bring those views forward. So, I appreciate your public comment, but I felt the dignity. So, I just wanted to say that I'm doing my job and will continue to do it on behalf of the people. So, thank you.
I just wanted to put out my best practices and how I would leave, I would leave with integrity as much as possible. So, this was about my opinion. It wasn't about anybody else's opinion. I just wanted to make that clear. But it's just been a tough road, 536 days. A lot of water under the bridge.
It's a tough road for everyone, for schools, and particularly those that are starting up and having meetings on this without the presence of our local health nurse is an issue, in my opinion.
Okay.
And the schools and the public and everyone that has listened to Axon County.
It's a matter of time.
And I'll continue. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Move business before the door. Six seconds. All the place manager, North Door purchaser, reviewer.
Yeah.
What about province?
The North Door underneath the chute hasn't worked for several years now. We replaced the South Door last year. We need to replace the North Door this year in hopes of both of them work. Building maintenance, just general building maintenance. It's the proposal from Weaver overhead door. They've done lots of our work up till now. And it's for $11,939.
Sure, you're okay with my shift to include we are on the board for the replacement of the North Door. By $11,939. To move by Fisher. So, second by Fisher Quinn. All the papers in the pocket say aye. Aye, pass this here. Okay, six minutes. The gravity, Beverly, PT forces more.
Yeah, this is from Stack View Equipment. This is going to be the lower that we're going to put in use. As the other being from the station site, the price is $9,900. Can you return it?
Sure, we're okay. Motion to approve this purchase order. This kind of your equipment is $9,900. I have a motion to approve. Move by Fisher Quinn. Second by Fisher. All the papers in the pocket say aye. Pass this here. Okay, the ones I looked for today, this is for the Praiser's office. It's replacement of a vehicle for their appraisal work. It's going to be for KHP Partner Program. This is the, this is a government purchase program. This is going to replace a vehicle that was a 2004, I'm not sure what they call it.
It's Chevy Classic.
It's Chevy Classic. It's amount of $22,873. I guess there's a question whether we need to get this this year, but evidently this are open. So, we take this opportunity to just share them. Have a motion to approve $13,873. Some fifty cents. Move by Fisher. All second by Fisher Quinn. Pass this here. Eric Bolt, I've got agenda. Are you here? Okay, moving on. We're going to have a discussion about the Axon City or village management. This is going to be an opportunity for people to come to this model, what they could do. I would like to set a couple of ground rules. Nobody should be able, nobody seems to talk about other suppliers or vendors in this regard. Nobody talks about the own ability to execute this. I like to say the last about half an hour, about 20 minutes for presentation. Allow me 10, allow me 10 minutes for questions or discussion from the commission and the public.
Herbert.
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 So, first off, is Mid-America Healthcare Management company?
Thank you.
Could you introduce yourself?
Yeah. Happy to. We're Mark Cook. One of the co-owners of Mid-America Healthcare Consulting Company. I brought with me Michael Hammond, who is one of our employees. And I have a long-term care, adult care license and work. Would you like me to be here at the lecture?
I think so.
Doesn't matter. Whatever's comfortable. Do you have a camera?
As you prefer. I think if it's, if it's, if the public will see your back, you have, I think what you're doing right now, I think it's all pretty well.
Let's go ahead and shut that door because that could be distracting. Thank you.
All right. Well, I've lived in that myself. I've been in healthcare for about 25 years. For long-term care and hospital organization. Our company, that's why it is primarily. It's working with rural healthcare facilities. Between Bridgewater, who is my business partner, we probably have about 60, 65 years of experience, 25 myself. And so, I've worked in a lot of different facilities. Love rural healthcare. It's my focus. Spent majority of my career working with organizations that have been struggling, that needed guidance, support, direction, help, both financially as well as in terms of culture, compliance, whatever it may be. So, I am interested in getting to know what your needs are here. I do want you to know that we can work with a couple of different models as far as from a consultancy. The preferred model that we have, how we like, is a model in which we hire and employ an administrator. And we manage the entire operation with that administrator. But a lot of value in having a healthcare consulting model where the consulting company is the employer of the administrator. I think you get a lot of, a lot better seamless transition if there's any word. Certainly have a significant support for that administrator. I think some of the challenges you face. And then I often see in rural communities, especially facilities that are independent, they just don't have a strong network or support group that they can rely on in terms of, or corporate office that can immediately step in if something, if something were to happen to that administrator or there's some type of event in the facility that would require additional support or help. You don't have the outside eyes that can come in and do a, do a mock survey within the facility, maintain quality and financial accountability within those, within those facilities. And so, having a model where the administrator is employed by that healthcare management company allows them to maintain that level of accountability as well as nurture and help them in their leadership development role. And one of the things we pride ourselves on is finding talent, developing talent, and allowing communities just to embrace and thrive based on, on the needs that are currently present. As we look at your facility, there's some, we've had a positive history. Your, your quality ratings are actually very good, I don't see any mess. But there are some, what I would consider very apparent needs and operational changes that should happen at the facility. And I'd be more than happy to dive into that a little bit more. Just taking a cursory look at your facility, I believe that we can make some changes that would help out both from a quality and from a financial standpoint. There's a number of things that I believe need to be corrected and corrected immediately. So, we've stepped into a number of situations, anyone from a facility closing to facilities that were just transitioned from one owner to another and needed help with that transition, long-term contracts, as well as shortage of contracts. So, that's not the only model that we would be, that we have done. If organizations such as the county wanted to hire their own administrator, we also tend to buy just consultative oversight and management oversight to give that administrator help and guidance, give them that additional network, a larger network that sometimes you just need to have when you're dealing with such a complex environment. Right now, it's probably one of the most challenging times I've seen in healthcare and in particular in long-term care. The federal government is considering making vaccination mandates for healthcare workers if they can remain in Medicare medical program. Workforce is a real challenge right now. There's a lot of what I, what I consider COVID burnout, which I think maybe you've experienced a little bit with people. And navigating the challenges associated with this kind of environment, I think that just having a network of individuals with a lot of experience in military health. You know, once again, just looking at the facility, I think there's a lot of potential. But you've, you've experienced some significant losses. Your present population has declined dramatically. My guess is that you're losing a lot of money. And just looking at your Medicaid rate and the cost report information based on your Medicaid rate, it's obvious that you are. Your private rate, at least according to the state of Kansas, is much lower than your Medicaid rate. Medicaid is welfare. Those rates are based upon your cost reports that you submit and is a three-year average. And so, those Medicaid rates represent a, a, almost a break even, if you will. You have to realize that that rate also does, it does not allow for having kids. But they always, they always qualify those with allowable costs. So, I think it's an important thing to understand and know how reimbursement, reimbursement works within these facilities. And right now, you're upside down. And at least from the data I was able to pull from, from the stage, just taking a brief cursory look. But it looks like there, at least in the past, I don't know where you're at today, your staff ratios were good. So, and your, and your past annual surveys are, are good. So, there's some positive things there that you, that you can build on. And I think, I think that you don't want to lose your reputation. And so, from my perspective, you're going to, you're going to get a return on your investment. I know sometimes when I go and talk to a group and organization and they're worried about the expense. I've not been in this situation yet to where not only did we pay for ourselves, but we went beyond in improving the bottom line. And it's not necessarily just about the dollar, but about the service that you provide. The fact that this is, this is county-owned says a lot. It says a lot about your desire to, to care for and nurture that vulnerable population. And so, our, our mentality about that, just so you know, in my experience, and I know that a lot of places will say, hey, this is their home, and it is. As you get older, your world shrinks and your, and it's because your ability to do the things you want to do becomes more limited. Maybe you can't go out to the theater or out eat as much as you want or engage in the things that you, you've done your whole life. And so, the object is how do we get to a point where we're able to still enlarge or re-enlarge that opportunity for those residents? How do we create spaces and ways in which they can still engage in and maintain the quality of life and the quality of experience? And how do we get to the point that we understand them well enough that we're trying our best to maintain their own individual identity in those facilities? So, you know, those are the things we, we want to look at and focus on as we look at the facility. And on top of that, the other key component is your workforce. And we feel like we bring a lot of talent into developing leaders. One of the things that, for me, that has always been my goal is to identify what people want to be in their careers and help them to get there. Quite often, sometimes they end up leaving, I'd say, further that career, and that's okay. I would rather be a part of the development of an individual's career in life than to hold them back because I need them in a position. And so, that's, that's, that's important for me is to have that opportunity and create a culture that nurtures individuals' desire to grow in their careers. Because I found that if you do that, people tend to flourish. They tend, tend to be more loyal. And even if they do end up going away and furthering their career, they're still loyal. They're still loyal. And they refer people back to you. They refer additional talent back to you and you begin to attract more and more talent. So, those are some of the things that we would want to focus on is developing your workforce, identifying how we can support them and help them to be truly creative with it. You don't go into healthcare without, without a good heart. And right now, it's really, really challenging on many fronts. Because we're, we're having to live by guidelines that are restrictive and yet, at the same time, our hearts are, we don't want to create those types of restrictions. We want it to be open and we want families to visit. And yet, we want to protect individuals. And that's some of the challenge that is currently prevalent in the healthcare industry and in particular in long-term care. So, I feel like there's a lot of opportunity at some of them. We feel like our, our organization has the ability to make some real changes and to help you through whatever your strategic goals are. You know, certainly part of our process would be creating and maintaining a long-term and a short-term strategic plan based on what the county is holding for the competition for this particular facility. So, with some of that, yeah, if you have any questions for me, please don't hesitate.
How many facilities are you operating and organizing?
So, we, we have some diversity because some of the facilities, so for instance, we have a facility in Kansas, a hospital, which also has a nursing home and assistance that is associated with it. We operate that facility in Portland, Kansas, which is a, which is a nonprofit. It's also a standalone nursing home. When we checked over, they had, they were in the process of closing. And then we reached out to them and said, you don't need to do this. You don't want to. And through a series of conversations, we made a rescue that, that disorderedness. Certainly had an shoulder to look at what it was when we checked over. We, we also have pharmacies that we manage. We have some health. We've worked in a number of places throughout the state just to basically consulting rather than management. There's not everything you do in the manual contract. Sometimes it's consulting. So, this, we're running, we're running a management of programs within a facility. Any other questions?
So, there's just two facilities you're managing then Winchester and Portland. And both of those are just managed contracts. Neither one are county. I don't care.
No, both are independent.
I have another question. I'm searching around with star ratings with Google. There's found to be a couple there.
Oh, yes.
And, and there's a lot of, it seems like it's, you know, like almost every person in my book, 20 questions one else. Has eventually a one star because the staff can't, they can't work. How, how does that get managed from your perspective?
You know, I think it's a really good point. Where, where in, I mean, current right now, country right now, you see a lot of almost visceral incivility in society. And I think it's because we are at times lacking a congruent vision. And so, one of the things I think is vital in managing facilities like this, because you have, and you want, to a degree, a diversity of population. It's, it's good to have people with differing views, right? There's, that's not necessarily a bad thing because you want various segments of society represented. But what has to happen is you have to recognize and understand what is your true why. This is why, why do you serve on the commission, right? I mean, each of you have your own reason and purpose for that. There's, maybe it's, we love the county. There's things you want to do. But finding out what that is and then building from that foundation can allow people then to recognize, we may see differently, but we also see the same with respect to the primary things involving nursing home. Why am I here? Well, because I care about how the elderly and the vulnerable are treated. I want them to have equality of life. I want them to real, realize that they can still live and live well into their old age. So, I, I really think that the key to that is finding the common and building off of that, that common foundation. Because I believe, I believe at the heart of it, they all have that, that heart of wanting to do good or to serve. Otherwise, I don't think they would go into the healthcare industry. And honestly, if they, if they don't, ultimately, you're going to want to weed them out anyway. Because you've got to have people with that. It's, it's too difficult of a work environment to not hire and retain people with, with that kind of heart. So, I think that's where you go, is you, is you work to build on what is their why for being there. And, and then you can kind of work through the differences in political opinion or whatever else may be and create a, a, a work environment for them.
You had work in Winchester, though?
Yeah.
And when did you get management?
Winchester was about 13, 13 years ago. That is really the kind of hard beginning. Um, that was really the, kind of, part of getting of our company. We had, um, another partner back then as well, we had some other facilities. Um, it's not uncommon under these models that you do so good that your administrator at some point goes and manages it on their own. But sometimes we, in fact, we, we kind of, I hate to say it, you work your way out of your job. And in some respects, from a consulting standpoint, they're sort of able to independently work. The challenge, our only challenge when we run into that is, is when they retire or something happens, um, in the, and they're not able to do session training, uh, planning, and, uh, they're not able to train and mentor for a period of time helping. So sometimes that, that transition is where those things happen, but.
Yeah, about thirteen.
And Portland has been.
I'd like to say first of all that I kind of think that this meeting is pretty mature. I'm under, the way I would, I think that we ought to do business is, we are currently actually in negotiations with the new. I don't think that this is a good time to be doing a head fake and considering other sources, but I'm not the chairman, so I didn't make that decision. So, I mean, I, I just wanted to put that out there because I think that until, I know a contract hasn't been reached, but to me is, we're in that process. I would like to have seen that process completely through. And if that does not work, then reach out to other companies. So I, I guess I'll just listen today and put it on hold for all of that possibility. Um, on a question, uh, part of your staff, a lot of the, um, owners are actually managing. It won't be directly on you, it'll be your staff underneath you. How many years of service have they had with, uh, do they have, uh, nursing home certificates? Uh, they actually been with other companies and came on board? I was just wondering how many, how much supporting staff have, have actually been in the nursing home business?
So, um, by far, I have the most experience, twenty-five years. My partner, um, he started his career out as a nurse, um, then went, earned an MBA and went into administration, you know, thirty-five, forty, forty years of experience. Um, I'm currently mentoring, um, Michael here, who doesn't have his nursing home adult care administrative license and master's degree. Um, and so outside of that, we're, we're always, you know, we're really looking at mentoring people within your organization as a consulting company, not as much trying to, um, bring in outside individuals to control or manage it. I really feel the key is within us. Um, and so just that mentorship, that leadership development is what we would want to, what we would want to focus. Does that answer your question? And I'm not familiar with what their negotiations are with others. I just know that, um, from our perspective, um, it's, uh, an opportunity, sent some, made some phone calls, tried to reach out to you. Ultimately, got your emails, sent you emails, sent you emails again. It's hard sometimes knowing how to, to let you know that there, there, there are people that just have the heart to help, you know? I love the industry, love my career in healthcare. So if I, if I see an opportunity that I can come in and, and help out, um, mentor an organization, uh, so that they're successful, I'm fulfilled. I'm fulfilled. So that's really what works. I'm not here to try and take something away from someone else. If you've got quality, gravitate, you're gonna find. Um, but if you don't and you need some help, we're, we're certainly here and, and willing to be part of that journey with you.
So that was one of my questions, and I haven't pulled up the emails. Has Senior Village ever been on your radar prior to our administrator retiring?
Yes.
Okay. And did you ever reach out?
With, with our organization, we've had a few conversations over the last year. Um, uh, not direct, not directly reaching out, not to, not to respond.
Okay. Well, and I apologize because I did receive your email on the thirteenth and the twentieth, but you, along with, when the news breaks, you lose an administrator, people come out of the woodwork. And so it was one of those, I, I'm sorry, I didn't respond to you.
Sometimes it's only when you know.
But with the transparency piece, I feel like this meeting, um, we should have had this last no member prior to me taking office, when we were hiring a new administrator, we should have been looking at a more of a, a management model, just from the experience I've had so far. Um, so anyways, I was just curious if we are on your radar before, um, losing our administrator or not.
So, um, I'm glad that we're able to make this acquaintance.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Good afternoon. Jeff, are you ready to begin?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Do you mind introducing yourself to the panel? Yep, I'll definitely do, yep.
That's him.
Yeah. Appreciate your, appreciate your time. I'm, uh, I'm Jeff Perry, the, uh, CEO of Amberwell, and, uh, I'm gonna be presenting some things. Uh, Dr. Black is here, who, uh, is our Chief of Medical Staff at Amberwell. He wants to talk a little about the medical part, medical care part, so. Um, you don't have to walk through this room if you don't. And, and I also want to say, I, I think y'all, even though that you may be in negotiation, I, I think y'all are listening because I know y'all got a tough decision ahead of you. So I respect that, appreciate that. So about Amberwell, um, we are seven locations, as, as you know, we are, uh, growing. We are two, uh, main hospitals, Amberwell Atchison and Amberwell Iowaata. And then we have Amberwell Eighth Street Clinic here in town, Amberwell Highland Clinic, uh, Amberwell Portney Clinic, Amberwell Lebonware Clinic, and Amberwell Troy Clinic. We're also in some negotiations with some other healthcare entities as well. Uh, I would call us a rare critical access hospital. We're actually fully funded by our own operations. We are ranked number three in the most, uh, number of patients seen, and that, that equals revenue. So revenue and number of patients is pretty much the exact same. And ranking, it's not, it's a, we rank three out of the eight, three critical access hospitals. The top two are funded by county or district dollars fully. Uh, so we're the top hospital in Kansas that is not supported by tax dollars, which is pretty big accomplishment, Atchison, Kansas. Six out of the top ten critical access are county or district funded as well. And as you know, the numbers, um, over, over about forty percent of them are, um, severe financial threat. Community impact is a nonprofit, uh, five-one-two-three. Access to local care throughout, but these, Kansas is a, a major vision for us. It's truly a healthcare continuum, um, every, every portion, whether patients at home, nursing home, in the clinic, in the hospital, uh, from health, as you, as you recognize. So just on the Atchison communities, we're greater than sixty-five thousand annual clinic visits. Um, with our Iowaata location, we're over ninety-five thousand. To the, just the Atchison and, and three counties around us, um, we provide two-point-six million and was actually being charity care. Um, that, that's a big portion. It's who we are as a nonprofit, and that's our intention, to bring back to the community. That's our way of doing that, and that's, that's why we feel it's important to grow. Uh, we wanna be stable on our own, we don't wanna be dependent on, uh, county tax, tax dollars. And I know you don't want me here asking for that, I'm aware of that. Um, so we, we have to grow to be stable. Economies of scale is important, part of it, it's tremendous. We have three, three-hundred-seventy-five jobs just at the Atchison-based locations. We've added forty-four in the past two years, forty-four jobs, most, the most in this region. Different counties, Iowaata, um, we have just over six-hundred-and-seventy. Um, resources expertise, um, part of our, our model, that is part of the growth is that we, we need enough adequate senior leadership to support across the system, no matter which location it's at, and no matter what type of service line it is. And so me as the health system CEO, um, we have our Chief Nursing Officer, Chief Medical Officer, Chief of Medical Staff, Director of Quality, Chief Financial Officer, Chief Community Resource Officer, and Chief Marketing Officer. All these people have extensive experience in the field. You're able to understand the continuum of care that I can't say enough about. The problem in healthcare, we're very segmented. It's, it's a nursing home, it's a clinic, it's a hospital, it's home health separate. Integrated model is very important in healthcare, um, to make sure that the true healthcare continues. All right. So next page, um, resources expertise related department expertise. We have infection prevention, that can go throughout our system, they go to the clinics, they go to the hospitals, all onboard. That, as you know, that position's vitally important in the time of, of COVID right now. Uh, we have nursing expertise, rehab, lab, pharmacy, materials management is very important in any, um, residential or care facility as well. Uh, we're able to access, um, uh, pretty much the highest levels of materials purchasing. However, they give us some additional savings as well. Uh, facility maintenance, which that's always the challenge in healthcare facilities or, or, um, on-premier care facilities, have housekeeping and laundry ability, information technology. So IT and equipment and network, so we can go out to each of our locations. Same thing as Iowaata came on board with us, we're able to upgrade their technology, show them the true integration throughout the system, and, and you can read things across, uh, locations. And then regulatory, regulatory is tough. I mean, there, there are so many things going on in the regulatory to keep up with. Um, that, that's an important one, whether it's, um, whether it's the standard medical and medicated services, uh, for hospitals with HVAC or drink commission, or whether it's state like K-Dads for our, uh, for our nursing homes. And so regulatory is an important part, we gotta keep our finger on. Having that senior leadership helps us make sure everybody has what they need, and that we're moving in the right direction. Although, you know, upfront, we, we have no nursing homes right now. This, this was part of our, our vision. Uh, we have, we've been talking about this for some time as well. So we, we actually have three current candidates, uh, that would be considered for this type of option. They range from eight to twenty-two years of experience.
Have they been administrators before?
Yes, uh, nurses, yes, yes. All of that, that's what I'm, all of those, from eight to twenty-two, they have a minimum, the lowest one has eight years of nursing home administrator. And, and the top one has twenty-two. So I'm gonna let, Dr. Black talk about continuum of care, and then I'll just get down to the rest.
All right. Uh, hello, everyone. I'm Jonathan Lex, I'm gonna go in this room, know me, I'm here to take care of you or your family members. Um, dedicated to Atchison fully, I've been here five years. I'm not a suit, I'm not a guy in gray suit, I'm not a guy in blue suit. A guy in a blue suit, it's a, when it lasts, the key here is in Atchison, right? We already have the key here in Atchison. I've taken care of family members in the past. I got here five years ago. Currently, I serve Chief, Chief of Staff, I'm the Director of ER, Director of Primary Care, I'm Director of two of our community care facilities here in town, New East Center Medical Lodge, which have great scores, and I think you guys can look at this. We have the knowledge of how to take care of these people. These are our patients, okay? When I send someone from my clinic to the nursing home to stay, we send them home from the hospital to the nursing home, we already have all that information. Those are our patients that we've known for years. I can tell you, I've rounded twenty different nursing homes, be it corporate, like Medical Lodge, be it privately owned, be it county-owned, I've done that over the course of my career. I can tell you without a doubt, those ones that have close connection to the hospital system in town, which we have, do the most good. I've heard a lot of things about numbers and a lot of things about profit margin here. I haven't heard anything, and I came in a little bit late, I do apologize if it was brought up before, I haven't heard anything about the humanity of the patient care. I've sat with so many patients, so many elderly family, crying members looking me in the face, holding the hand of someone I've known for years, flushing the dye. You're not gonna have that with the corporate ownership, with the partnership, with the, with the, someone who's going to manage with, this is not my, not my decision, I'm not a suit, I just take care of the healthcare aspect of it. I can promise you with the continuity of care that we can have with Amberwell and Atchison to your village, the patient care will be above and beyond better than any other institution that you're gonna have available. Uh, it's just something that I know from experience, and I know the patients. I can tell you, even from Mosaic Hospital, that they come to Atchison, Atchison Senior Village for, uh, new admission, uh, to your village. The medication list aren't even there, the H and P's are barely there, the discharge numbers aren't even there. We don't even know why they're there. Nurses are so busy running around because they're under staff, they don't know what the patient is there for. Those first forty-eight to seventy-two hours of patient care, once they're discharged from a hospital, are the most critical because they're coming off the most sick portion of their stay to the most frail portion of their stay, and then they're going to break days in nursing homes. If you don't have that care right in those first days, are you gonna send your patients or your parents somewhere that doesn't have that transition care? That we don't know what actual medicines they're supposed to be getting, and it's all a cluster? I can tell you, because I've seen it hundreds of times. I see this person's data, we're sharing, you know, electronic medical records, we're sharing the medication records even, with discharge numbers, H and P's. We are a growing institution. Jeff, I have the utmost space then, I've been here five years, but two different beneficiaries come through. I can't tell you how, for a level of decision, for not only our community, the Amberwell community as well, this is one of the same. Decision is easy in my eyes, but I'm not one to give decisions. I can tell you though, bureaucracy, there's a bureaucracy, calling up at the corporate level makes things much more difficult to register. Let's keep this in mind. That's all I got just here.
Thank you.
A few more things, which I did collect. So as far as, uh, strategy, there are, our, uh, goal of Amberwell is to continue strategic growth with economies of scale. And that, that will end up being savings for Atchison Senior Village. So the economies of scale decreases the overall expense per patient or revenue. Um, savings and new revenue allows us to reinvest back in people who present the facility. That's really what we're doing at Amberwell. We're, we're increasing our profit margins so we take that profit and reinvest. We're, we're not the problem, we want to reinvest those dollars. Um, plan for Atchison Senior Village, the growth, obviously, now that we, we know more about what you desire, um, we, we're interested in a management agreement. Um, use of system resources that we have, which is twenty-four. Uh, recruitment and retention, which is a big part that was talked about today, totally the roots, that culture. Culture, the big part is the, uh, grow of the organization system. We obviously have marketing expertise that is very vital for Atchison Senior Village. And then it works with seven locations and our other partnerships to refer Atchison to Atchison's Village. The big picture here is we take care of patients that Dr. Black talked about. We, we wanna make sure we refer patients to, it's patient's choice always, that they, they can go to a good place. If there's concern about that place, how, how can we refer to that? And that's always been a concern. And then, especially, we'll talk about, keep care locally. Uh, from the operations agreement, um, page their management agreement, maintain and name Atchison Senior Village. We know that's important to do with commissioners. Uh, employees will remain employed by Atchison Senior Village. Uh, the one is that we would have the administrator employed, so by Amberwell, which I think is gonna be the same, um, for most, um, uh, contracts like this. Of course, that would be reimbursed by county at cost, so no uptake, just costs to us. If you achieve that rate, access to all of our Amberwell resources, this is just obviously some of it, infection prevention, our medical expertise, uh, recruitment, marketing, et cetera, et cetera. And then access to group purchasing contract. Um, that, that's a big savings that there, that's commonly, uh, significant for larger group purchasing organizations. We're obviously already beginning discussions on Amberwell Certified Nurse Aid Program that would be with local schools, it's been our intention for some time, as we've been talking about this, that they would do their example to Atchison Senior Village because on-premier care is one of the key requirements of those programs. Uh, and that would be the recruitment process, a process that's what we're going throughout Amberwell with physicians, nurses, practitioners, that bring in the training through there so people say, you're good. Um, and then continue current partnerships. We, we've also learned that any county multi-county home health and hospice is a very important aspect and understanding. Um, and then, so we can be willing to put that in agreement too, it's very good. Um, and then, so our. Um, and then, so agreement from the financial terms of a sub-management agreement, Amberwell resources, that cost for county approved budget. So that means you, uh, obviously, you already do approve a budget, if you want to mark any costs, it would be there, we'd be able to provide it. So, that's not a cost, no, no uptake, we're actually saying no management. And so while we're saying that, you're gonna ask why we're saying that. It's, it's exactly what we've been doing, our intentions to grow, to take care of, uh, all these challenges in our community. Is that, that's our intention, we'll be doing everything, we're gonna be investing, we're, we're donating to schools, we're trying to give back to the community. This is a part of what we believe that will make Atchison Senior Village, uh, around for long-term. There has to be dollars invested, as you all know. And savings from that, which would be greater just by, greater than just the management fee. You can take that reimburse or go back into the facility, which I think is bigger than this there. So, ultimately a hundred percent profit, net profit towards Atchison Senior Village capital, capital salaries program or cash on hand for Atchison. And that's, that, that's all I have, that's any questions you may have?
What's that? How are you gonna get paid?
Well, the, it's the cost, we're not worrying about a separate management fee. If you do, if you do, um, for example, I'm gonna go back to the marketing example. Your budget is marketing, we'll use our resources, you'll, you'll reimburse us at our cost for those, and that's it. And there's no management fee.
Should we hire the administrator?
Yeah, if I hire the administrator, that'd be on our, on our, on our books, he'd reimburse us at cost for that. So no, no additional, no additional cost necessarily unless y'all said, okay. Unless we propose like a bigger marketing budget, they, because they claim, you can market a lot, because that's a big part of it, not the only part, but they are. So then we're thinking, marketing budget, say, hey, y'all want to do that, and we're gonna use our organization resources at, at cost to do that. That's how important Atchison Senior Village is to us. And it's, it's been a voice from our physicians, our providers, our staff. There's been concern for, for some time now. And for them to speak up and say, we gotta do something, that, that's the, that's honestly why we're doing this. Not looking to make profit off of Atchison. We, we're more concerned about this long-term stability and this is the way, this is the best way to do it, to be honest.
That one, well, just, obviously, you have to, you, you should have a very, but other, energy, supply, expense, with the administration.
So, that, that administrator would have access to our complete management team, you know? To me, we have the resources, we don't wanna make it management heavy. We wanna, we wanna make sure we have adequate frontline people, those, you know, that they have the resources they need. That one administrator, obviously, I'm director of nursing, those things, very deep positions. And I, I'm not sure what other current management positions, it's not gonna like, it's gonna be more than it's today.
So, is it purchased?
Yep, so they would be able to just access our, 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 uh, materials management expertise. There's no cost to the access, it's just cost to what's purchased. There's significant savings in what you're paying now. Things that wouldn't, that, that once might change as a county, you already have great, um, for good benefits, I'm assuming, we're, we're not gonna beat that. So it makes sense why they're employed, so, we're by the management. Other questions I can answer?
So I think I would just like to speak and say that, um, I wish this was the conversation we were having months ago. Um, because as a new commissioner, I think in January, when I sat at a QA meeting at Senior Village, I knew we were in trouble. We needed help, we hired an administrator in November. And put her into a failing position. I mean, that first meeting, I felt terrible because I was on the interview panel, even though I hadn't taken office yet. And I was excited because of the four candidates, he hired the right person. But then when I go to my first meeting in January, it was mind-blowing of what the facility, where it was left by the previous administrator. I mean, we had tags and weren't accepting Medicare or Medicaid patients, and we were in trouble, like. And so we expected this poor girl that had, you know, the passion, the compassion for the patients to come in here and fix and clean up a mess. And that was, that was hard. And so, I mean, I, I remember, I, I went back through the timeline of this year of me being a new commissioner. It's like, March eighteenth, I sent you and see you from a community health line, in an email, and I'm like, I don't, like, we need local resources, we need help. I don't know what this looks like, but I know as a commissioner, I can bring business into the, to the table. But I have no medical background, nor do I have, you know, long-term care facility backgrounds. Um, and so, sending that and asking, you know, for help, I think that was my initial, like, hey, we're in this position. Um, and then our administrator sent an email to us the first of April, first week of April, or the prior of, of, you know. When I'm saying this, it's all administrative stuff, like the quality of care is there. We have the best nurses, nurses and the people, like resident care is there, but it's all the other things. They come along with running a nursing home and keeping it compliant, those are the things we need to talk with. And I think our initial meeting with you in the commission room on the ninth of April did not go well. Like, it didn't go well on either side, it was more of, hey, we wanna get into the nursing home business and we want you to be the first versus, we're, we're sinking here. We need help, like, we need someone to help us. And so, um, then we lost our office manager and we're, we're advertising for an office manager at the end of April. And then we came back to you in June and sat down here, and it was much better reading. It felt, it felt good, like, it felt like we walked away with, okay, send a management agreement. And, you know, you take, you kept us updated, we sent you the hardware trust information because we don't, we wanna stay as a county-owned facility. We wanna keep that trust alive and we wanna take care of. And our top two things is our staff and our residents, that's what we have to take care of. Um, and we got a proposal back and the agreement of, you know, effectively transferred all assets over. Bank accounts and rebranded and it just, it didn't feel like help, it didn't feel like help. And so, we, again, it's like, this whole year went so fast because then you get hit with COVID. And then you, like, I was just looking back at, you know, time flies, but we met June fifteenth. And then we're talking about, we go through a budget season and our HR director is asking us, like, what do you wanna do with the budget? Because are you gonna get us it revenues? Like, there's hard questions for us as commissioners, um, and then we interpreted the management agreement. Um, we have federal surveyors, COVID breaks out, Eric and I are PPE'd up, we're up there like helping. In any way, a, a commissioner can, I mean, because we can only do, we can be a body and we can do certain things, but. It was very overwhelming to everyone, staff, um, and then like I mentioned earlier, when we, when the news breaks to the media, you lose your administrator and you have COVID in the building. Like, people came out of woodwork, like, my inbox blew up with opportunities, like, people looking for, for failures, like, we felt like we were. And, you know, we started, uh, actually, our company clerk, Michelle, had billed a couple of phone calls from Anu, from Mark Hastings. And she got a good feeling about him, and I was still ignoring emails because I'm like, there's so many of them, like, we're in recovery mode, we're in survival mode. We're doing anything we can internally, we had all hands on deck and it was county, that's the blessing of having a county nursing home is, we have county staff and resources that we can put up there to help. And, and we were all in that, in that mode. Um, and so, he called again and then I ended up visiting with Mark Hastings from Anu. And we had set up kind of like that next week meeting, just kind of have this, what can, what can you help us with? And in the meantime, I mean, we just crumbled, like, we had federal surveys, we had four days to clear tags, we had no staff show up on Saturday. Like, we had all of these things where it looks from the public perception as a knee-jerk reaction, but what it was is a gentleman that helped. He was on vacation and he was bending over backwards for us, sending us staff, sending us people to clear our tags, to get us back on the administrative side of things. And it just, it hit home because as many good old boy agreements that don't feel right today that were done twenty years ago, like, this one, something about it felt right, like. Because I, I can't feel those calls at home because I'm helpless and it's miserable. Like, as a commissioner, to feel helpless when it comes to patient care. And I was in contact with all of the patients', um, loved ones and contacts to keep them, you know. And I want you to hear this from me before this breaks, you know, on Facebook or on the news. And it's the end of the day, we had to make tough decisions, but they weren't taken lightly and they weren't. We had everyone at the table, we had leadership from Senior Village, um, you know, our county counselor. Um, and again, I don't want to back out on what, what, anything we've done because of, we should have. Because I, I feel like the opportunity was there and we should have been having this back in April. I mean, and we just got to a point where literally, it was gonna be breaking on the news that we signed a management agreement or we closed our doors. Like, that's, that's where we were, we were at, that's where we were forced. And, um, luckily, we keep having meetings and, from a corporate standpoint, like, Mark Hastings does own the company, but he owns other companies that we've already been working with, within Senior Village. And he's the owner, but yet he called every day and night and gave updates, like, this is what we're doing, this is how we're, you know? And it just, it just felt like that's, that's what we needed. It, it couldn't be a financial decision, it couldn't be a, it had to be the quality of, how do we get our nurses that are working way too many hours? And taking away from their families that are on their breaking point to say, I've given you fifteen-plus years at Senior Village, but I gotta take care of, you know, we were, we were breaking people. And we had to take the decision that was in the best interest of our, our, our staff and our residents and, I know.
There was, I mean, a couple points, was that the thing?
Yeah, no, absolutely, I just want you to understand that, like, it was, it was not like the cutout local, because if anyone knows me, I'm all about local partnerships and, and trying to make things work, but it just.
Um, so, I want, I'm gonna say a couple things is, when we sit here in June, within nineteen, whatever, where it's, I got ten minutes. And so, out of those ten minutes, where I was trying to ask questions, so, hey, what do y'all want? The, the agreement was made that we would have it separately, so we could discuss this in detail. You all, you all fully agreed to that. I said, I, in the, in the agreement that I sent, so, so we're guessing, because y'all tried to sell a nursing home, not y'all, see, prior, tried to sell the nursing home. So we're like, we'll start there, this is just a draft, so they know it's a sit-down discussion, we're gonna have a meeting. So it was, we sent an email, this, this, I made several requests, I mean, again, uh, about it. Cause, cause our employees were getting louder and louder, like, we had concerns, we need to get there. And the, the day things fell apart, I personally drove up there and, and, and in the middle of it, the administrator probably having, having a weak moment to help get four patients out of there. We stationed, we had staff stay overnight, it didn't work a day to take care of those patients in the hospital. No charge, no charge to those patients, no charge to nursing, picked them three days, which is very expensive in a healthcare life. Just to do the right thing, no intentions in return. And so we really, we really, you know, stood out there first. I, I, I went to administrator that day, days after, tell us, we're here to help, we're not asking for anything in return, just for help. And I, and I felt like I, I reached out here as well to have further conversations. And, and I, I just make, make, when you're in that type of situation, sometimes it's best just to stop from an interim, interim agreement in place, until you can further assess. And that's where, where, we highly respect, y'all, y'all had it rough. I, I, I support y'all later as commissioners, our organizations support you as commissioners. Y'all had it rough and, and we thank a lot of y'all because of that. But, a decision could have been made, putting in on the agreement, so we could have a deeper discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, well, um, so, I, if I've ever had an email from you asking, so I don't know who you were in.
They'll all ask me to email it to, to Michelle and, and, uh, who, who, so I, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm.
I mean, I, I kind of agree with Casey here that, um, you know, it's, it's already give a second first aggression. Um, that first aggression's, you know, kind of dictate which way you're headed and, and what. We thought your goal was, which was mainly, I want the public to know that the presentation today is nothing like the presentation we had the, the, the last time we were here. That was about branding, uh, Senior Village as an Amberwell facility. And that's pretty much it, it was growth and branding. And that was gonna be kind of the way things have fixed, is just to be under our umbrella. So, uh, that was my impression anyway. Um, and I, I kind of would have to say that some of this with Anu was, they were in the right place at the right time, that's the way business works. I mean, it's, um, it was a perfect world, we would have been interviewing everybody in November, like Casey said. That, that we find ourselves in difficult spots and you create, you work with what's there at the moment. And actually, I would consider all three of your companies local. That's, just because it's inter-county doesn't necessarily mean it's local, you know, that it's not local. Uh, if, if you're in a neighboring county, because goodness knows that, uh, the hospital, uh, wants out-of-county businesses as much as visiting county. So, I mean, I, I wish that this discussion had happened in a different place at a different time. And again, I'm gonna say that right now, I, I don't like this conversation now because I feel that we are in a, talks with, uh, Anu. And until that is, that either we sign a contract or we go somewhere else. I just hate to set you aside on what we're talking about with that.
Appreciate y'all listening.
Thank you, actually, thanks both of you guys for taking the time, you know, everybody has a busy day. Thanks for letting everybody, for what they're doing, for all the support. Does Anu wanna present? Large, it's a call. It's time for you to move on.
I think it's good, I'm glad you guys came because it's high-staffed, it's conversations, basically, they give it all out there like, um.
Oh, oh, I was looking off the side.
Also, it's under, you can't go back on, we were put in a position, we made a decision and we did, and it's not fair to, to then, to, to rethink that one. Everything so far, every day, we get reports back, then like, it feels good, it's like, okay. Because for the last eight months, it has not felt, felt good to be a commissioner over, overseeing their village and watch the nursing staff struggle and, um.
Thank you for letting us come and I, whatever you decide, we hope that it works out best for you.
Actually, the, the day, staff, our staff and patients are, are where I'm at.
Absolutely.
Dr. Lex said, spoke to that because it's like, that's what's at work.
I don't, uh, I know it feels like a heavy burden, but if I could just say this, don't let it be heavy when it needs to be, really. I mean, you're doing good things, just follow your hearts and, you know, if you have to come back to the table later, you do, and that's okay too. You know, I drop my staff all the time, you gotta swing the bat, sometimes you, you miss, you miss the ball and everyone's why you connect and develop. Park and hopefully, whatever you choose, it's, it'll be that for you guys and, you know, don't overburden yourself, you've done good things. And it is a heavy burden, don't get me wrong, but at the same time, you know, don't, do what your, do what your heart says. We appreciate the opportunities, Jeff feels the same way, undoubtedly, you know, if, if you, whatever you choose, we'll still be around. And, and if there's a, if, if there's something we can do.
And, and if there's a, if there's something we can do, you know, we'll, we'll.
At our reaches, I know. This time in this place, we have, we're kind of in between, and we, like I say, we haven't signed a contract, but yet, I feel obligated to follow that through, and that's me talking from, from my standpoint, and to see where that goes, and.
If you want advice on your contract, I'd be happy to do that free. You know, if again, sometimes it's good just to help make sure that you're protected. Uh, you know, I don't, Jeff might even do the same thing, I don't know. Those types of things, it doesn't hurt to just have that advice. I've done it before. I mean, I, I know business is business, right? Um, but at the same time, I really don't think we'd go into this, because we're trying to get business in and of itself. Um, so, I mean, if you're navigating that, and you have questions, or there's little details, I'd be happy to help you out, because you, you want to make sure that you are protected in your contract. And then you're also going to want to make sure, if I may say, that you have a, a good system of accountability with whoever you choose. You just want to make sure you've got a good system of transparency and accountability and process. Just keep that in mind.
Thank you. I definitely feel we have, because this is what Mark Hastings has been doing as the owner of the management group, is what I wish our administrator would have been doing, and that's communicating daily with us, answering questions and providing where we need help. And his goal is to come in and help us stabilize our facility, um, again, to relieve the, the burden on the nurses and let them do what they, boy, which is taking the best care of patients, so. It feels nice to have improvement of morale. Do you have anything you want to add, Brian? Because Brian is like the face of Senior Village.
I'll tell you what, I know that, uh, it was a lifesaver, uh, at that time. I know that, uh, Amberwell did take residents, uh, but so did, uh, the staff at, uh, Orangeville or East, Easton, too. So they have them too. Uh, I didn't get there, I wasn't there on the day they evacuated. I was there the next day, and then since then. And, uh, I know that I've had a lot of conversations with, uh, I do all the way up to eleven and twelve o'clock at night. Just trying to get, you know, things under control and situated up there. So it has been one of them things where we needed to help. It wasn't something that you, it's just what I thought about. I think I came down four or five different times before that we finally decided that that was the place to go. That we needed to go somewhere, or less than that. I just, I don't know, it's, it's one of the things where there's much to it, and I think they brought a lot of things to the table that would be nice to know. It's a year-to-year contract, so.
Next one, sir.
Thank you.
Other than eight, twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, we have a, this is probably, um, it's a 2021 final favor for the corporations.
Correct, that's.
Achievement Services, twenty-four thousand, uh, patches, actually, concerned, this transformation is going to be fourteen thousand five seventy, uh, and the extension forty-two thousand seven hundred twenty. Uh, more all trustees of two thousand, what is, can they vote each of the partners, forty thousand? Project concern sixty-two thousand five hundred, and a guidance center, thirty-six thousand five hundred. Our total of two hundred thirty-five thousand, two hundred ninety dollars. They may make questions about that. I think you guys can disperse this one. Yes, thank you for bringing it to us.
Are.
You're going to disperse this without our.
Well, I can, correct, but I wanted to bring it to you guys, because ultimately, it's your decision. I mean, I know it was, it was something that you voted upon with the, um, adoption of the 2021 budget, but we pay it in two payments now, because we changed a lot of the way the funds are. Um, a lot of that comes out of County General, so we still pay it in two payments, but you guys are ultimately the ones who give that final approval.
Does anybody want to change that approval? So chair, we're going to take a motion to approve the, um, or just, do we need an, an approval? So there's a purchase order for everybody?
There's a purchase order for everybody, because I do have to run that through AP.
Okay.
Um, and if I could just basically go ahead and get your signature on that very first page, just to acknowledge that the payments are finally approved, and then I'll get those through AP and do those in time.
Is that fine for me to sign, I need to know it was a part of the 2021 budget?
Um, basically, for approval that they're going out now. Okay, good.
I just signed up. That's what she asked. Just go ahead and do that, and that will, that will work.
Got it.
I just want to sign. Okay, eight point five, C D G, cheap grant, it's on the folder, and I don't have my copy.
Sorry, I didn't.
I, I swear I have it in mine.
Well, and I think we already.
I know, so I can't find it.
We have. Group, the backlash, you were scared, didn't make the show?
We had, um, I, the last time that I was actually out here, I had sent the act, actual applications of the, um, entities that filed that were eligible for the C D D G on the zone. And then I sent another one that of the, of the entities that were not eligible. Um, and I think we had kind of agreed that we were going to go ahead and pay, or that you guys agreed that you were going to go ahead and submit for the C D D G on the file that were eligible.
Yep.
So you have the information through the bar?
Um, yes.
So, would you share with everybody who they are, their mouths, and maybe, you know, the C D D G grant, uh, that we could have a launch?
Can we put that on next week, once we have the administrator, please?
Please, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so we're capable of doing it?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Absolutely.
Old business before the board? Actually, three, the president's. She's all familiar, so. It's my, I had this word in mind. Uh, county councilor, please. I can't, I can't, I deserve executive session, just later.
Please.
So, you can tell us what it's about, and play it pretty specific, is it?
My, my personal.
My, my personal?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, we need the three commissioners, you and county councilor.
It's Julie, um?
Yeah, she's Julie's.
And then we'll break out a room for Julie. If there's anything, we have to find it. I need to write it down. Let us just start meeting up here in this little building. Start screening, we'll be back after a good time. Excellent.
Thank you.
This is, personal matters, it's not what it was. Okay, what time, how much time?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Are we ready? Uh, I'll move that the board of county commissioners recess into executive session at two nineteen PM. To discuss personal matters and unelected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. Now, the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee, and that the board cannot have an executive session at twenty, two thirty-four PM, um, at the E O C, and those persons will be the three commissioners, Tim Glover, Pat Henderson, and Julie. All right. One second. You have a second, all of you, or something? All right, second one?
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Soon as Michelle gets to the table. Okay, very good. I consider it, so to say, to, say, just, I should have had. Commissioner? We're back with, we're back with all the sessions, so is there anybody who'd like to make a comment under public comment? Seeing none? And if there is anybody who want to comment, the chairman, they're taking a motion to adjourn at two thirty-five, three. Some of them. You have a second, all of you, or something?
Aye.
Passes three to zero. We are adjourned.